The opinions on Scoop Squad Truth Squad are those of the hosts and the guests and not those of WVRC Media. Copyright 2023.
Hey Charleston, you're listening to the Scoop Squad Truth Pod, our new name. It's Police Switzer and I'm here with my executive producer, Ron Hughes. It's been a hugely wildly busy week.
It's an amazing week.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, it's been a whirlwind, but very eventful, very informative.
And I think we're now nationally famous as a podcast, or at least statewide.
At least statewide.
Famous, but you know, a lot of people that follow West Virginia news will, you know, have heard of this, you know, the story we did two weeks ago with, with Chief Tyke Hunt.
Yes, on Chief Tyke Hunt with our, one of our guests Jenny Harless. Hey, I've got some comments on that. Can you, how about you run down our list of sponsors before I get some comments?
The Truth Squad Truth Pod.
Scoop Squad, okay.
I knew I'd missed that.
Market, market Ryan. Go ahead. Say it again.
Okay. I'm only using one eye.
Right. He had surgery.
The Scoop Squad Truth Pod can be found on Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube. We ask you to like us, follow us, and share every podcast. If you subscribe, you won't have to look for it. It'll always show up on your smartphone. Our sponsors include a fairly new sponsor, Integrity Insurance, offering auto, home, life, business, workers' compensation, and pet insurance. What is pet insurance, you say? That's health insurance for dogs and cats.
Oh wow.
Covers medicine, specialized food, illness, surgeries, medication. I know a lot of you probably invest thousands of dollars, especially in your specialty breeds.
Is that expensive, pet insurance?
No, it's only $40 a month.
Oh wow.
Or so. So I think if you've spent $5,000 on a whatever golden doodle, or I mean, some of the other breeds can be very expensive, but even if it's just a dog you picked up as a stray.
Well, that's my dog. We still spend a lot of money in bed.
Bills, yeah. Bills add up, believe me. Your shots and so forth. So remember Integrity Insurance on 16 Capital Street, 346-9181, or you can go to www.iigwv.com. Also by Eggplant on Bridge Road, anything but ordinary. Eggplantshop.com is the website. But they strive to give all of their customers the best experience, whether you're just browsing, purchasing a gift for someone, or a special occasion, or maybe building a wedding and baby registry. So if you need beautiful stationery for an upcoming party, or just want to come by and chat, you are welcome at Eggplant on Bridge Road.
Yep, love them.
And also T Graphics on the west side at 312 Buchanan Street, 345-4816. You can also reach them at tgraphics.com. But Claudette and the crew there do a great job with screen printing and embroidery since 1984.
Chris, you could get your t-shirts there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, she's great. Okay, so is that it?
Oh, and Quinn Computers in Spring Hill.
For all your computer needs.
Absolutely. QuinnTechnologies.com. They are excellent at repairing computers that you do dumb things to, or download something stupid and get, get a virus, or if you need networking for your small or medium sized business.
Yes. We appreciate all of our sponsors. It's just, it's very humbling that people want to support this podcast. It's very much needed. This podcast was born out of a, a need to hold government accountable.
All levels of government.
Yeah, all levels of government and to be able to call for transparency. And speaking of transparency and accountability, one of the stories that we did two weeks ago was on our guest Jenny Harless. If you haven't listened to that podcast, it was the podcast before last.
July 6th was the release date.
Yes. And the Hoppy Kirchfield picked up that story. I believe, I'm not sure how he picked that up, but he did this week, right?
Right. Well, it, it made some of the TV stations after Shannon Snodgrass was at City Council meeting on Monday night.
Yes, it was City Council meeting. Right. And, and I was at that council meeting and um.
You recorded it too. So you could go back and watch it on our Facebook page.
Right.
It's Scoop Squad.
It'll be there for 30 days. Um, yeah, that's right. There was a city council meeting. I feel like it's been a year.
It's been a year and two days.
Weird. But I was at that, at that city council meeting and Councilwoman Snodgrass made a statement to the city council about this alleged incident and called for a special investigation, an outside investigation. And after she did that, of course, it, it made news and Hoppy, it made the local WCHS and then Hoppy picked it up.
And Channel 13 picked it up.
Yeah, WCHS was there, WCHS TV.
TV was there.
Yeah, it was there.
I know WCHS Radio was there and did a story on it.
Yes.
And gave us acknowledgement.
Right.
As did the Charleston Gazette Mail had a story on it today.
Today, on the, it was front page.
And gave us recognition, also mentioned your name.
Yes, Greg Stone. And I, and that's, you know, that's kind of the, that, I don't mind, I, I wish that they would just mention the Scoop Squad. I, I don't want to be the story.
Right.
Because without Jenny Harless and her just determination over the last year, all that she's been through, without her bravery and coming forward, there wouldn't be a story. And so I feel like that's kind of what I really wanted to touch on a little bit. Hoppy addressed this, or he, he did a commentary and talked about this a little bit on his show yesterday. He had Danny Jones on his show first.
Right. Then he, and today's commentary on the Metro News, wvmetronews.com website and on the network, Hoppy talked about it, gave us credit for it.
But he talked to Danny. He caught Danny, he called Danny.
Yeah, Danny was the one that he interviewed on the radio on Tuesday.
First. Yes. And, and Danny's first, the first thing out of his mouth was that Shannon, Councilwoman Snodgrass, and myself were very adversarial with the administration, insinuating that this is just all about politics.
Or maybe even, some people maybe think it's personal and, and it's not. We, we were just about transparency. We're just asking for the administration, as we are with other, like Calhoun County and Lincoln County. We were asking for transparency whenever we investigate anything government related.
And here's the thing, like I've known about this story for over a year. I didn't go to Jenny and ask her to come on my show. She reached out to me. I asked to meet with her. You and I met with her for two and a half to three hours and, and asked her many questions. I sought counsel from people who I trust. You know, is this a good idea? Should I do that? Yeah, I mean, I.
We vetted it with, with two attorneys.
We vetted it, yes.
Not just one.
And so I made an educated, a very, very educated and thoughtful decision before I had her on this podcast and I chose to do it. I didn't make this political. This isn't political. If you're a Republican, a Democrat, a liberal, or a moderate, it doesn't matter. Everybody should be concerned about this situation. I am a vocal critic of the mayor, but I'm critical of this.
It's policy driven. It's not personal.
Right.
And I don't think it's political either. It's about policy of transparency.
Well, and I, you know, if you want to say that I'm a critic of the mayor, that's fair, but, but the only reason that I am is because I, I have decided and discovered that this, this administration is not transparent. Like, and non-transparency breeds distrust. I am distrustful of this administration because they have proven themselves not to be transparent. And, you know, if you're an elected official, official, or you hold public office, you know, don't vilify me or the ordinary taxpaying citizen for demanding transparency and accountability. And this is what that looks like. This is what it looks like. And unfortunately, it takes a situation like this blowing up. It had to blow up, right?
Right.
Before anybody started paying attention.
Would, I mean, before we released the story through Jenny's narrative, it was, it was fairly well known in, you know, in the back channels of people talking and gossiping, you know, this was not a, a secret.
Everybody had been talking about it. Everybody knew about it.
Anybody that was in city government, county government, had, had some kind of relationship with a police officer, knew about this story.
Right, right.
And the fact that it took, I wouldn't call us amateurs, but it, but it took people that don't get paid to do this for a living, to bring this story out, I think is fairly telling.
Yeah. And once, once the story got out there, that's when the media started paying attention.
Nobody, nobody wanted to touch it until somebody released it.
Right.
On some other medium. And, and we just happened to be the one.
And holy cow, I, I get nothing for this. Like, I have no reason. I benefit from, from telling this story or allowing Jenny on my podcast, zero. There, there's just, there's no payoff here.
No, no.
The, the whole purpose was to, I, I met with Jenny. She was telling the truth. I could tell that. And I thought that she deserved a chance to tell her story.
Right.
And, you know.
We, we talked to her. She's talked with two attorneys. You know, we vetted the story. We, I wanted to look her in the eye while she was telling the story. And I, you know, I'm a very skeptical person, maybe too sarcastic, but I, I believed her. I believed her story right away. And I'm sure she's told it a thousand times.
Yes, she has. And it's, and it's the same story, you know, like she, she.
Yeah. She, she doesn't kind of rush through it, you know. She, she takes the time to cover every aspect of, of that story.
Yeah, she's very careful with her words. She, she was very thorough in making a timeline. You know, she.
Maybe we should publish the timeline, do you think?
She was prepared. I, I think that's something that she would.
Well, ask her.
Absolutely. But, you know, today, Chief Hunt did come out with an apology.
Right.
The city attorney did release a statement saying that, what did Tyke say? Let me pull it up here real quick. I had.
It was on the news, radio and TV that he apologized.
It was. But I, there was a something specific that I wanted to address that he actually said. He apologized for personal mistake. He admits to, what's it say here? Okay. Hunt said in an apology letter to the council on Wednesday that he misused city property and was suspended without pay for three days in June of 2022. Hunt was not specific into what property he, he misused. Now, that's, that's a question. That's a question that people deserve, the taxpayers deserve to know.
Well, I think, I think it's apparent that he, you know, he misused a, a city owned phone. I'm sure his phone is supplied.
Well, we don't, but that's it. Again, we don't know that. Because during the interview, Jenny said that the, the number that they originally were texting on changed after 14 or 15 texts back or for, back and forth.
Okay, so it started with one phone number.
So it started with one phone number and went to another one.
So if, if like many people, he has one business phone provided by the city and one personal phone, you know, he's, if he's used both numbers, then.
But again, that's a question that is out there that hasn't been answered.
No. Or city property, the, the offices that he used to.
Yeah, I think, I think Kenny brought up a good point about why the media gets involved in something like this. You know, people's personal business and, you know, what their relationships are extramarital or whatnot, that's their personal business. But when it begins to compromise public safety, or it could compromise public safety. And, and in one of these instances, there was a text that was published where Tyke is telling Jessica, or not Jessica, I'm sorry, Jenny, how to get into the building secretly.
Secretly, right.
And it's very detailed. I mean, I, I just feel like that they're.
Let's look at it another way. Had this been a different person and maybe even a different chief, this would have been an opportunity for blackmail.
Right.
And blackmail to get something, you know, that the victim wants.
Yes, yes.
If, if they decided to go in that direction. Now Jenny did not.
Right.
But if it was a different chief that maybe had other secrets, but they didn't want spelled, this would be an opportunity for blackmail that could have cost some cases, maybe had some cases dropped.
Yeah. And I mean, I.
Or special, you know, or, or special.
And that, that's like worst case scenario, you know, but then you talk, you think about the culture of the CPD and attitude reflects leadership. Like what, what's the culture of CPD when all of the officers, it's very well known, Chief Hunt.
I know many of the officers there and I'm, I'm sure they're disappointed.
Yeah. Well, you know.
I've been a pro-police guy, you know, all of my life and always had friends who were, you know, police officers. I'm, I'm sure they're all quite disappointed.
And that's what's disappointing to me as someone who is pro-law enforcement. And, and I'm sure to Councilwoman Snodgrass, who is so pro-law enforcement and who fights, she's done a lot for law enforcement, who fights for them, who fights, fights for, you know, facility, better facilities, who fights for pay raises, that it, it just sheds such a bad light.
Right.
On the office.
And Shannon has, has tried to get new facilities for the police department, to get them out of City Hall and, and into something better. And, you know, maybe something like this could, you know, stand in her way. Maybe others wouldn't provide support or funding because of, because of this.
Right. And, and I, I guess the last thing I want to say is that nobody takes any joy in these stories.
No, no, it's tragic.
It's tragic. It's tragic for Tyke's family, for his friends, for his subordinates, for his superiors. It's, it's, it's a tragic story.
I felt really bad for every police officer out there.
Yeah.
Because it's just another bad.
It's demoralizing.
Yeah. Paints them all with a bad.
With a bad brush. That's right. So that's, you know, that's just all I want to say about it. No, it, we don't sit behind these microphones and ha, 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 and, you know.
No, no.
But.
Tragic stories have to be told, just like happy stories.
But the story has to, the story has to be told so that the public can get the answers that they deserve and that Jenny can get the answers that she deserves, you know.
When it devolved into the FBI showing up at Jenny's door.
Right.
And, you know, of course, they mentioned Chief Hunt by, by first name.
Right.
At first, by only his first name. It showed that, you know, that he may have been, may have been getting some special treatment from the FBI.
Or, yeah, that the FBI and Tyke may have had conversations. That's what that, that's what that ring doorbell video, that's the question I had, you know, did, did, did Chief Hunt have conversations with these FBI agents, or was it just his wife Jessica, you know? But that's what I'm saying. Like, there's just, there's, there are questions that still have not been answered. And I hope that the media continues to push for those answers. I know that the, the mayor's office was, was quiet and ignored Kenny several times. Yeah, several times. He, he asked for information on this months ago and he got nothing in response from the city. So.
It's like someone said, you know, bad news doesn't get better over time.
Yeah. And if you.
Begins to stink, just like the garbage.
And if you didn't do anything wrong, if nothing was wrong, why didn't you just come out and say, we investigated this, there was nothing wrong, you know, but the more you let it go on, the more it looks.
The more it looks like we've investigated ourselves and we've found ourselves not guilty.
We are not guilty. Yeah. So that's, that's, that's the issue. And that's kind of what I just wanted to say is that this podcast is about demanding transparency and accountability in government. And sometimes that, that, it hurts.
Right.
Right? So we're going to take a break and we will come back with our guest in the studio. We'll be right back with Scoop 2, right?
We'll be back.
All right. Scoop Squad Truth Squad is brought to you in part by T Graphics on Charleston's west side. For 38 years, this Charleston-based business has provided in-house professional screen printing, commercial-grade heat transfers, very important to set us apart from the cricket world, and embroidery, promotional products, advertising, specialties, distribution, serving clients locally, regionally, and nationally, superior service, quality goods, and on-time delivery. Call 304-345-4816, or go to tgraphics.com. That's T-E-E graphics.com. And by Quinn Computers. With many of us working from home, connectivity is more important than ever. Let Quinn Computers in Spring Hill take care of all your computer challenges. Computer and laptop service, all brands, network troubleshooting and repair, wireless network, VPN installation and support, security and firewall installation and support, backup and recovery service, remote systems administration, www quintechnology.com. That's www.quinntechnology.com.
You're listening to the Scoop Squad Truth Squad, brought to you in part by Quinn Computers in Spring Hill and by Eggplant on Bridge Road. And we're back with the Scoop Squad Truth Pod. That was our first break. We want to come back and continue our discussion about the Chief Tyke Hunt situation, as well as other things going on in the Charleston-Kennel County area. And we'll also have Chris Walters here talking about his run for the county commission. Want to mention that some of our sponsors include Integrity Insurance, featuring insurance for auto, home, life, business, and workers' comp, and pet insurance, health insurance for dogs and cats. They're located at 16 Capital Street, Charleston. Reach them at 346-9181. And you can reach them at www.iigwv.com. Also sponsored by Eggplant on Bridge Road, anything but ordinary, eggplantshop.com. That's eggplantshop.com. And also T Graphics on the west side, 312 Buchanan Street, tgraphics.com and 345-4816. Reach them for screen printing and embroidery. They've been around since 1984.
Hey, you're back with Scoop 2 of the Scoop Squad Truth Pod. And before we get to.
You're doing so well with that name change, you know?
I know.
It just rolls off your tongue, whereas I just stumbled all over the name.
Well, it used to be a tongue twister, but now, you know.
Now it's not.
Now it's not.
Now that it's not a tongue, tongue twister, I can't say it. Me, the professional broadcaster with the speech and communications degree.
I get better saying it. You obviously get worse. All right.
Well, because I'm old.
So I want to give really quick, our contributor, one of our contributors to the Scoop Squad Truth Pod is Tristan Levitt. Tristan is running for House of Delegates here in West Virginia, but he has a long and storied career in government and working on Capitol Hill. And he's actually in, on Capitol Hill today with the IRS whistleblower case.
Right. And that's been his career for, what, the last 10 years?
Yeah.
He was involved with the Hillary Clinton email server investigation.
Scandal investigation, yeah.
He was there. His job was to protect the whistleblower.
Yeah, he's got a super cool job.
So now he's protecting the whistleblower in front of the Hunter Biden case.
Yes. And today.
With the IRS.
Today, so Mark Shapley was the whistleblower that is out there and well-known and has been testifying. And then today we learned that whistleblower ex, who was anonymous, we learned his name today. His name is Joseph Ziegler. And I watched a little bit of that, of that hearing. It was a six hour, suppose, I think it's probably still going on. It was, yeah, it was estimated to be.
We had our TV on, we could be watching it.
Yeah, I did. I went and got my nails done today. And so I was listening to the, to the court.
At the nail salon, they were watching CNN?
Well, no, I had my phone on up to my ear.
Oh, okay. Because usually if I walk into one of those places or watching some kind of animal show or fashion show.
But it was, it was super interesting. And when Tristan comes back in town, I want to get, I want him to give us, come back on and give us a synopsis of everything that happened. But I learned a lot. It's cool.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah.
I was working, so I didn't get to catch all of it. I caught bits and pieces on the, on the news on the radio.
Well, Marjorie Taylor Greene, is that who it is? Marjorie Taylor Greene?
She's the senator from Colorado, is that right?
No, is it Georgia?
It's Colorado, I believe.
Is it?
I'm pretty sure.
Y'all. Okay, Ron's gonna look that up.
We're gonna have to look that up.
But while he looks that up.
I know she's real attractive.
She's very, she's very well, she's very attractive. She's very well spoken.
Oh, US Representative Marjorie Taylor Greene.
Yeah. She's very smart and she, we know it's her.
Georgia, you're right.
Yeah.
49 years old.
Knew that.
Who am I thinking of out of Colorado? Another lady?
Yeah. Well, I listened to Marjorie Taylor Greene today and she brought up some controversial, she actually had some controversial pictures that she brought up of Hunter Biden. And there were a few objections to those, even though they're all over the internet. But she had made the point that there was a $10,000 payment from Hunter Biden's law firm that was labeled for a golf membership that ended up being not a golf membership, but $10,000 for an escort service. So I was like, wow.
Well, either way, you know, you're surrounded by swingers, I guess.
Oh gosh, I can always count on you, can't I? All right. Let's, let's just, let's get on with it, shall we? All right. So we've got a guest in the studio.
One of my good buddies.
Yes, Chris Walters. Hello, Chris.
Hey, how are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
Very good. Thanks for having me on.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Chris is a former state senator.
That's correct.
And your dad was a former, was he a senator?
He was a delegate.
Delegate. He was one of the four horsemen.
That's correct.
Back in the day when the Republicans were beginning to build their way back up.
The original four was Dick Henderson, Jay Nesbit, Steve Harrison, and Roland Walters. And they represented Sissaville, Cross Lane, St. Albans at that time.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm connecting the dots. Sometimes it takes me a while.
And Dick Henderson had a bridge named after him. He'd, he'd worked at the old Union and Carby at Institute.
Super cool.
Dick was an amazing guy. When I was a kid, he always used to give me Chiclets, the little two-piece gum.
Oh.
With his campaign information on the back of it. And he was great. His grandchildren, the Isballs, went to Cross Lane's Christian school with me.
That's where I went.
And they were.
Oh, maybe that's how I know you. It's not, because you're young. But that's cool. I didn't know we went to the same school.
Amazing family, great people. Miss Dick Henderson. He had a brass band at his funeral playing, When All The Saints Come Marching In. And it was, you know, sad and everything. And then all of a sudden, boom, the brass hit and it kind of made everyone chuckle because that's how he was. He was just a amazing outgoing guy. And I still miss Dick to this day. And it's been, man, it must've been 20 some years since his past.
Now, are your parents still around?
Yeah, my mom and dad are both around. They live in Cross Lane. They're here in the valley.
I see his dad all the time.
Okay. Well, that's cool that we went to the same school.
Uh huh. I didn't go to that school because it didn't exist when I was.
Yeah. That school was actually born out of the textbook controversy that we talked about on the show.
And I was, I mean, people talk about scary school situations these days. I was in school during the textbook controversy when people were making bomb threats.
That's right.
Towards the schools. So.
That's right. Well, okay.
Talking about terrorism.
I would like to talk to you a little bit about, you are running for county commission. Am I right?
Yeah, that's correct. I filed pre-candidacy to run for county commission. The seat coming up, actually not this November, but next November is the election. You see everyone getting in early these days.
Right. I was gonna say, when did you decide to run for county commission? Because you're running for Kent Harper's seat. And I would think that that would be something that not everybody would think is a viable option until recently. So when did you decide?
Kent had it for so long, it would be a uphill climb in ordinary times.
Kent's been in there for 30 years.
Yes.
Since I was seven years old.
Right.
So he's been in there for a very long time. And, you know, my wife and I, we had a lot of discussions about what we wanted to do. Because county commission has been something I've been very interested in.
Now, was this before the incident with Kent Harper?
Yeah, it's been a couple of months.
Okay.
Uh huh. That we've had this conversation. And, and, you know, Kennel County's a place I've been born and raised. I love this place. My business is here. My wife is born and raised here, from here. It's an area that, that I enjoy so much and I see so much potential for our county. You know, since 1980, we've lost 25% of our population in Kennel County. We've continued to see people leave the area. Even so, I feel there's so much room for improvement and bringing people in. Her and I have talked about this. We've prayed about it. And we came to the conclusion that it'd be a great opportunity to run for it, to try to represent these people who I've grown up with and absolutely, you know, care for here. And so we made that decision. We made that decision somewhere around April is when we decided to do it.
You filed in June, right?
We did. That's correct. We ended up filing in June. And, and, you know, we did some meetings behind the scenes, trying to talk to people about, would this be a good idea? Would this be a good opportunity to run for? We decided it was. We wanted to wait till after the kids got done. My son had hockey camp in, in Ohio. My daughter had a horse competition down in Lexington. We said, once they get back from these two big things that they have, then we'll start to focus on the campaign.
Okay. Yeah. So you mentioned your wife Liz. I did not know that she was Sharon Spencer's daughter.
That's correct. Yep. So.
Oh, I remember Sharon from the House of Delegates. I covered her in the eighties.
Now Sharon is super liberal. Is Liz liberal?
So Liz is a Democrat. I'm a Republican. And we have two bipartisan babies.
How does that work in your house?
You know, it works fantastic. It works fantastic.
Is she as liberal as her mom?
Um, you know. Um, you know, she's, economics, we get along great. Social, we get along great too. I mean, you can, if you can have a conversation with people, and you're, you're able to have that open, comfortable conversation, and you may not agree on everything.
Right.
But you know what? No, no one agrees on everything.
Yeah. What do you guys disagree on?
Um.
Listen, I'm a woman. I like.
You know, she, she is always right. She's always right. So it's one of those things where.
So does she tell you to vote for?
Um, no, she doesn't. Sometimes we disagree on who to vote for.
Well, I was gonna say, if she did, he may not be able to vote for himself.
Which, she, you know, she can't vote for me in the primary because she's a Democrat and I'm a Republican. But the general, I gotta crossover vote.
She has no intention on changing parties?
No, she doesn't have an intention on changing parties.
Maybe she could become an independent.
And neither do I. We're both stubborn there. And it's, it's fun. I'm the one Republican at her family's family reunion and Thanksgiving and everything. And she's the one Democrat.
Do you guys talk politics? Or do you guys follow that role? I was gonna say.
Of course we do. And it's so much fun. It's really a blessing being married to her, being involved with her family.
How many siblings does she have?
She is seven out of eight children.
I remember when I covered the legislature in the early 80s, Sharon was always pregnant.
Uh huh.
I mean, every, every January, when we came back to do the next session, you know, she would be.
That's a lot of kids.
Getting ready to have a baby.
Well, we have five. So, you know, I know what that's like. But anyway.
Yeah, I'm the youngest of five, too. So we both come from big families. And, you know, we stopped at two children. I've got a 13-year-old. I can't believe I'm saying that. She just turned 13. And then I have a nine-year-old son as well. And, you know, very blessed. Our family's very blessed. You know, this community's been so great to us. And.
Now, can I ask you a question? I don't know. How long were you in, you were a House of Delegates?
I was a state senator.
Okay, you were a state senator. And how long were you in office?
2012 to 2016, I was in the Senate.
Okay. And what was the experience like there?
You know, it was an interesting experience. The, the Capitol, you're one of 34 people in the Senate. And then you're one of 100 people in the House of Delegates. There are 134 representatives there. And they all have great ideas. Okay?
Yeah.
And so trying to get a bill passed and through one body, and then going over to the House, and then lobbying them to pass a bill.
Yeah.
It can be very tough. I had a lot of success in doing so. I worked with Andy Richardson to do the sidewalk dining bill. The reason why you can have the dining on the sidewalks for all the restaurant, the ABC used to not allow that. He and I came up with a bill together and put a bill in, which now allows you to dine on all the sidewalks in downtown Charleston.
So that policy was driven out of the alcoholic beverage control.
ABC, yeah, ABC was.
So it was because of liquor, liquor laws.
You got it. Absolutely. So we got rid of that. Another thing was growlers. We couldn't have growlers in West Virginia. So I worked with the Black Sheep Brewing Company here locally, a couple different organizations, to be able to open that up where growlers can be sold to help local craft breweries.
On behalf of myself, thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I love a growler.
And, you know, when you think about the local businesses, the small businesses that are in that industry, they can't pay for canning. They can't pay for storage shelf, the cold shelf on the supermarkets. It's really expensive. But they can do a tap at a local restaurant where you can get a crawler, which is a smaller size, or a growler, and take it with you. The wine shop at the Capitol Market saw increased sales because of this. The one thing we need to figure out is, is unfortunately, the wine shop at the Capitol Market can't give out samples. It is illegal for them to give a little teeny sample of the, the beer.
But you can give samples of wine, right? Or no?
They can't give out samples.
Can a winery do it?
Don't they have wine tasting, though?
They can do wine tastings, but before, they couldn't give out samples.
Okay.
So you can buy the whole growler without trying it.
I see.
So there were a couple of things that, you know, where my tenure ended in 2016, we didn't get to. But my whole focus was small businesses, helping small businesses find ways to remove red tape by government and allowing them to do what they do best, create jobs and grow.
Okay.
And so that's really what I wanted to do in legislature. I focused on broadband. When I was there in 2012, they got rid of the Broadband Development Council. I brought it back. And that Broadband Development Council is an outside group made up of individuals who oversee the money coming to the state for broadband expansion. Before, it was overseen by the Office of Technology. Well, when I was there, BTOP happened, which was a huge grant that came in for broadband. They spent over $100 million on towers. And they didn't spend a sing, they didn't send a single packet of data across any of those towers for nine years. And if you look at how BTOP was done, the $42 million for broadband expansion, they gave 100% of that contract to one company. That one company did the expansion in a way that they would only be the ones to have access to any of those lines, to, to not grow competition, but to smother it.
Right.
And so we had to change that and create more transparency, which seems to be a key word on this podcast.
Yes, it is.
More transparency in government. And so unfortunately, there's a lot of fraud, there's a lot of waste, there's a lot of abuse. And I tried to tackle that every chance I got.
All right. Well, let's talk.
Some of the equipment, there was a controversy about some of that original equipment and that, because of that bill.
The routers.
Right. They were, they were like $80,000 routers.
They were.
For situations where you needed a $200 router.
There was a library, which was ran out of essentially a size of a double wide trailer, and it had an $80,000 router in it. Could you explain that? It's just, the waste is incredible.
And the company that sold it to them, you know, was the one that got the contract for broadband.
Yes.
Was, was that in, what, 2012?
2012. Yep. We were, when I just got in, that's what we were, aside from, you know, the water crisis we went through, that's what we were dealing with, was the broadband, BTOP funds and what happened to them.
Interesting. Well, I just learned a whole bunch of stuff.
They should have been around back then.
Yeah. Hey.
Eric Air was around then. And he did a lot of great work.
He did a lot of great work.
He did a lot of great work.
And he's left the newspaper to start his own.
Oh, is that right?
One of the, there are like three or four different news websites that are out there. And if I were a little bit younger, I'd remember all of them. But, but he started one. Then some of the ones that were fired recently from the newspaper.
Have started their own.
They started their own. So there's like three different news websites. Usually they have the word mountain or West Virginia in their name, you know?
Mountain State Spotlight is one, I think.
Yeah. And they were, a lot of them were former newspaper reporters who had to go out on their own.
Seems to be a theme. Well, let's get back to the county commission talk. So historically, Ben and Kent have agreed on everything. I mean, that's just a fact. And I think that's been one of the criticisms.
Well, I think that's true in most county commissions where you have.
Yeah, I guess so.
Because I, I think all county commissions have three members. Is that the way the state code is written?
Yeah, and that's by design, right?
I believe that's correct for every county commission.
So, you know, there's gonna be.
It's gonna be two against one.
If it's not three against one, none, it's two against one.
Right.
At best. And usually, it's not the Republican, it's the two.
Yeah. And Lance has been on this show before, Lance Wheeler. And he acknowledged that a lot of times, it's, it's a two against one situation. But will you be a dissenting voice on the commission? Or, I mean, talk about that a little bit. Because, you know, Lance really can't bring anything on his own and win it right now, if, if it's, if it's two to one. So what, what voice?
She has to have a two to one.
Yeah. What, what will you bring?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm gonna bring whatever good idea that works for Kanaw County. I'm gonna bring that forward. All right. I, I don't have to agree with everybody. In fact, I will be in the side to shoot things down. I'll be on the side to build things up. It just depends on the idea that's brought forward. And is it an idea that we can work with and make our county better?
And afford.
And afford. Absolutely. So, you know, some things I've seen go through the county commission that I, I don't believe that we could afford, or that need to be relooked at. I would be a dissenting voice to those.
Speaking of, what's your, what are your thoughts on Sports Complex?
You know, the Sports Complex, right now, I think the price tag on it's $80 million. I'm very concerned that the fact that it doesn't seem that they had any agreement whatsoever with the bondholders before announcing the project. You know, an Olympic swimming pool, it would be fantastic for this area. Is that the place to do it? Is this a project to do it? Right now, I don't believe it is.
Is that the most cost effective place for it to be built?
Exactly. Exactly.
Well, JB made the point on last week's podcast that the mall.
JB Acres.
JB Acres, that the mall was sold for $10 million.
Right.
Why, you know, if you wanted to do that, why not just buy the mall? And then, because as it stands right now, the Sports Complex is only going to be using one part of the mall. And then what are you gonna do with the rest of it?
That's correct. So, you know, most cities of this size have a business district, a warehouse district, and an arena district. Charleston decided to just kind of throw that all together. You know, if you look outside of just the city of Charleston, you have between Rand and Bell, tons of land, right on the river, that can be used as an arena district, where we could do additional things. Sometimes looking outside the city isn't such a bad thing.
And the property would be a lot less expensive to purchase.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, I feel like, I feel like this announcement with the city and the county, I mean, of course, it was made back during an election, right before the election, it's a big announcement. And I think that you, what you say is right. Like, why are we having it confined to Charleston, where there may not be a good place for it? Well, I think the answer was that, was because it was an election season. So, but anyway, that's speculation.
Charleston throwing money in towards the project, and the county throwing money in towards a project, together, working, I mean, that's great. We want to see the county and the city work together.
Sure.
We want to see projects done by both, where not just one pool of money is being utilized. However, we have to question that, if we put something like this in another area in the county, would our $40 million as a county, B, A, we put in less, B, do we need a partner on the project?
Right.
And finally, can we increase the economic activity in another area of the county?
Right.
You know, that's, that's one thing that, that's so important to me is, yeah, Charleston's great. It's where I live. It's where I have my business. Cross Lane's is great. Nitro's great. Marmet's great. Sisoville. You've got all these areas in this county that could use economic development, that could use something like this.
Right.
And I'm sorry, in big cities, not everything's right there. It's, it's in the outskirts.
Not in, not in the, the downtown.
The downtown.
Super downtown shopping area.
And by, and by putting it in the outskirts, you're growing economic development in another part, which feeds into that downtown, which feeds into the area. And that's what we need to do here.
Well, but, but aside from that, you know, I feel like a point to be made here is that we're not even, the city of Charleston is having difficulty maintaining the parks that they have. I think the BMX bike area has been torn up twice.
And this is up at Cato Park, is that right?
The, the condition of Cato Park is terrible.
Terrible.
Big Bend conditions are bad.
That's a golf course and tornado.
We're not, we're not maintaining what we have. Am I right?
You are correct.
You're correct.
So what are we gonna do about that? I mean, if there's not money for that?
We, you know, we have to be, we have to look at the money that we have. We have to look at our budget. And we have to be budget conscious. Just like, you gotta run government in a way that you look at your budget, you look at the losses, and you look at the gains as far as your monetary value. And then you have to look at those losses and say, okay, what can we do? Is this worth maintaining? How can we upgrade it? How can we take care of it? How can we make it less of a loss? What can we partner with to ensure that it grows? How can we do it? We need to look at each individual thing judiciously.
And we have to be, be able to afford to maintain it.
Well, and that's the thing.
And if we can't, we can't afford to maintain Big Bend and Cato Park.
Right.
You know, how are we going to afford to maintain an $80 million investment? I mean, that's, it's gonna, it may cost us a million dollars to, to maintain it every year. Are we going to be able to afford it?
Can you afford the utilities?
We don't.
Can you afford everything that goes with it?
I live right beside a park, a city park. And yeah, the, the turf looks great. But you've got benches that are rotting. You have equipment that is not up, it's not kept up. You have grounds that are not, you know, well maintained. You have, you know, mulch that, that you have to beg for, you know, to make the fall zone, what do you call it, compliant. So it's just, it just does beg the question, we're not taking care of what we have currently. How are we gonna take care of something of this magnitude? And people don't generally ask the question, how, how much is this gonna cost to maintain? And can we do it? And how will we do it?
Right. You know, speaking to the parks, speaking to, you know, you brought up probably a baseball field.
Yeah.
Um, listen, these youth activities are fantastic. I, I work very closely with Capitol Midwestern Little League. They did just get new turf, which was needed on the fields, because we were canceling games for kids all the time. And, you know, when kids are involved in youth activities, they're not involved in getting in trouble. And so helping to preserve things for kids, even if it's at a loss, but making sure our kids have the recreational activities they need, so they can do things to improve, to be able to compete with kids from other states for scholarships, and to have those resources is huge.
Well, that's, that's an investment.
That's an investment. That's absolutely right.
You know, that's well worth the, the effort and the, and the money.
And that's where you have to look at things judiciously. You really have to look at each and every individual thing and say, okay, what is this? How is it an investment? Can it bring in money? If not, okay, why is it, why does it matter? If it's helping the kids and the youth and the communities, then we need to look at investing into that.
And speaking of investments, let's invest in a break at this moment. So.
Yeah, let's do it.
We keep everything's even. You know, we're not rushed.
Well, there's three scoops, so technically, it's not even.
Well, I mean, three evenly divided scoops. We're trying for 20 minutes on each one.
Sounds good. We'll be right back with the third and final scoop.
Brought to you in part by Quinn Computers. With many of us working from home, connectivity is more important than ever. Let Quinn Computers in Spring Hill take care of all your computer challenges. Computer and laptop services, all brands. Network troubleshooting and repair, wireless network VPN installation and support, security and firewall installation and support, backup and recovery service, remote system administration, and more at Quinntechnology.com.
If you would like to tie your business with this popular podcast, you can contact me, Ron Hughes, to advertise at ron.hughes, R O N dot H U G H E S, at w v radio dot com. Or you could call me at three zero four three four two eight one three one.
You're listening to the Scoop Squad Truth Squad, brought to you in part by Quinn Computers in Spring Hill and by Eggplant on Bridge Road.
And you're listening to the Scoop Squad Truth Pod. We've been talking with former state Senator Chris Walters, who is announcing that he is running for county commission in Kanaw County. We may be breaking that scoop, as maybe the first entity to, to announce it. I want to mention our sponsors. Chris Walters happens to be a sponsor at Integrity Insurance, auto, home, life, business, workers comp, and pet insurance. For as little as $40 a month, health insurance for your dogs and cats. They're on 16 Capital Street. Go to I I G W V dot com. Also by Eggplant on Bridge Road, Anything But Ordinary, eggplant shop dot com. And by T Graphics on the West Side, three 12 Buchanan Street, T graphics dot com. Call them at three four five four eight one six. They have great screen printing and embroidery. They've been around since 1984.
Hey, you're back with the third scoop of the Scoop Squad Truth Pod. And we are here with Chris Walters, who is a county commission candidate. He is a businessman and a father here in Charleston, West Virginia.
And a former state senator.
And a former state senator. Yeah. He highlighted some things that he was involved in while being a state senator, which I did not know about, and is super cool.
I mean, the fact that you can eat outside in downtown Charleston is.
Yeah.
Is partly.
Due to him.
Due to him. That's right.
So, thank you.
Should have been a no brainer.
Yeah.
Sure.
You would think.
Forever, the red tape just did not allow it. It's just.
Well, I think that's, 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 you know, part of the difference between a conservative and a liberal is that we are, you know, conservatives want to remove those, that, that red tape. And so that, that things that are, should be common sense can be, um, uh, come to fruition without a whole lot of red tape, right?
Well, y- you're, you're letting people decide, you know.
Yeah.
You know, what they want to do with their businesses and, and sometimes you can really regulate a business to death.
Yeah, and, and so far Charleston loves the outdoor dining, don't we?
Absolutely.
All right, so you came on this podcast, um, and we are known for being controversial.
Not on purpose, it just seems to turn out that way. It's kind of like Jessica Rabbit, you know?
So we've got a lot of things that we want to talk to you about, but first of all, I, I've, I've heard from a credible source that you and Ben are, are pretty, pretty closely aligned. Um, and I'm just wondering, did you and Ben talk about you, um, filing for, uh, county commission before you decided to run?
So I actually met with Lance first, uh, went and saw Lance in his office. And I feel it's important to let people know that are in those positions that you are exploring the possibility of running. I met with Lance first, told him I was gonna run for the seat, talked to him for a minute to hear his opinions about it. And then I texted Ben.
I assume he was supportive of that?
Yeah, he was, absolutely. And then I texted Ben and said, hey, Ben, I'm planning on filing to run for this seat. Uh, I haven't met with Ben in person about it. Uh, I just shot him a text. He said, well, that's great. Good luck to you on your race.
Okay.
Uh, Ben and I are friends, Lance and I are friends. I mean, this is a small community.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm friends with a lot of people. Um, just because we're friends and we have worked on things together, doesn't mean we agree on everything.
Sure.
Okay, um, I am my own candidate. I am running my race. I am not a certain person's candidate for this seat. I am hopefully your candidate for this seat because I want to be a voice for the public. And again, if it is a great idea, I'm gonna support it. If it is an idea that fiscally is irresponsible, that I don't agree with, I'm not gonna push it forward regardless of who brings it to me.
Okay, that's a good answer. Thanks for that.
Did you talk to, uh, the sitting commissioner, uh, whose seat you were, uh, seeking to take?
Um, no, I did not talk to Ken about running against him for this seat.
What are your thoughts on his current situation? What, what?
Uh, you know, I think the fact, and, and, you know, I, to go back to what you were talking about earlier in the podcast, is having an outside group do the investigation is the right thing. You want impartiality whenever it comes to doing any type of investigation. And right now, it's been taken out of a police force, which is overseen by the city county, and moved to the state police force to do the investigation.
Then the special prosecutor is from Logan County.
Is from a different county, not in this county, and impartiality is, is the greatest thing. Beyond that, you know, any of the other allegations are up for him to answer to, not for me to speak on.
Right.
You know, so all I want to see anytime, if anything comes up against anybody, is impartiality.
Yes.
Because that is the only way that you can get to the root of a cause, figure out the truth of what happened behind it, and try to give the fairest day in court for everybody.
And you were already going to run for this office or for the seat before the controversy of May?
That's correct.
Did you think you could beat him? I was just curious, like, this guy's been county commissioner for thirty years.
Let's talk about that, you know? Yes, politics is a name ID thing. Um, it is. A lot of people go and, you know, they know who the president is. They know who the US Senator is, the governor, and then it gets a little hazy as you get further down the line. And I like to work hard. I like to go out, you know? If you don't sacrifice for what you want, you sacrifice what you want. And that's something that I see this as an opportunity to get out, work hard, tell people about me, Chris Walters, and what I want to do for this county. And I believe.
How did you think you were gonna beat a thirty year?
How did I think I was gonna beat a thirty year?
A thirty year veteran to the county. I'm just, I mean, it's just a fair question.
If you look, it happens. Um, the US Treasury, the state treasurer's race, you know? No one thought that would swing the way it would swing. You take a ton of different races throughout. Um, I mean, when Michael Oliverio beat Alan Mullahan in the primary up in Morgantown. I mean, if you look across this state, the, the people understand, yes, somebody's been there a long time and it's easy just to pull the, the ticket right beside their name. But the reality is, is they want people that are having fresh ideas, that have energy and want to see this place improve. And if those people come out with their policies, their ideas, and people can relate to that, they've got a fighting chance, just like anyone else.
Okay.
And I'm just asking for that fighting chance. I really want to put forward what I want to do for Canal County. Um, and I'd like to go over some of that, um, here.
Sure, sure, yeah, we can. Do we know if Ken's gonna run?
I don't think he's announced.
Nothing that I've heard yet.
Okay, one last question, because I have a vested interest in the prosecutor's race. My daughter, Morgan Switzer, is running for county prosecutor. Will you endorse a prosecutor?
I will not, no. I will meet with both of them because the county commission oversees.
Because Ben Zalongo is, he is, he is openly endorsing Deb. And so I just didn't know whether that was something that you would take a position on.
Either prosecutor. I have, I am happy to meet with both, and the reason why is.
Is there a reason you were at Deb's filing? I heard, someone told me that you were at Deb's filing.
Yes, my, I, I found out somebody was filing for prosecutor, went down and to see who it was, I hadn't met Deb prior to that. Um, and she asked me to get lunch. We have not done that yet.
Okay.
I'd love to get lunch with Morgan as well. Um, and, and I, shoot, I'd get lunch with both of them at the same time, you know?
That would be great.
To me, whoever's gonna be prosecutor of Canal County works closely with the county commission. The county commission funds the prosecutor's office. I need to know what goes on in the prosecutor's office, how they work together and how I can better improve the tools that they have. And whether those ideas come from one or the other candidate, I want to hear what both have to say. Again, I'm gonna run my race and focus on my race. I'm not gonna focus on anybody else's race. If anybody wants to send something to me, great, I'm happy to hear it.
Okay.
I'll sit with anybody, but I am solely focused on what's best for Canal County and my Canal County commission.
All right, tell me what you want to do.
Absolutely. So again, I want to do some common sense ideas. Uh, one of these common sense ideas involves Crosslanes, Nitro and St. Albans. Most people don't know that behind the Buffalo Wild Wings in the Nitro supermarket, right down the hill, is the Nitro St. Albans Bridge.
So as the crow flies, you could stand on that high part of the, uh.
The Buffalo Wild Wings building.
Yeah.
And then look over and there's the bridge.
I'm gonna tell you, that, that place has been a nightmare. That exit off Crosslanes has been a horrible nightmare since I was little.
Yeah, and, and.
With the horse and buggies.
Yeah.
I was born and raised there.
Funny.
Grew up, swam for the Crosslane Sharks. I'll tell you, I understand.
But that traffic, man, is the worst.
Turning right into Crosslanes is awful.
It's terrible.
You know, a study was done, must've been fifteen years ago, showing that, yes, we have the three lanes. We have the one lane, the turning lane, and then the other lane, that a fourth lane can be put there. Um, in a lot of cities, to deal with traffic problems where there's four lanes, they do kind of like these lights over top of each lane, and then at certain times of the day, three lanes get a green light moving forward, one lane going this way.
Right, if you're going towards town, you know, in the morning, it's, it, you know, you get more.
Yep.
Lanes that are turned green, and then if you're leaving town in the evening, the opposite lane.
You got it.
Opposite side gets more, more green.
That would be common sense for Crosslanes.
Yeah.
That would alleviate tons of the traffic coming off of that interstate turning right, okay? My plan for helping St. Albans is for the traffic that turns left off that exit. When you turn left off that exit and go up to the Nitro supermarket, having a straight road right down the hill to the.
You mean Nitro Marketplace?
Nitro Marketplace, that's correct. Still the Crosslanes exit.
Yeah.
Right.
Whenever you go through the marketplace, down the hill and hit the bridge, that gives everyone in St. Albans access to an interstate exit. The property values of everyone in St. Albans will increase dramatically. You have a hundred and seventy acres of land that's developable that'll open up for commerce right there on the back of the mall. You've got townhouse opportunities, you've got hotel opportunities, more outlet shopping area, everything.
Kind of like what they're doing at South Ridge, right? With that, with, uh, the interstate or the.
This is a smaller scale. This is a smaller scale than that. So it costs less money. But it helps so many people in St. Albans.
Have you talked to the St. Albans mayor or, or council about this?
I'm getting around to go see Dave Casebolt, the mayor of, uh, Nitro, because I need Nitro to work with me.
Right.
Because part of it is their land and we'd be working together. And then I'm gonna be meeting with the mayor of St. Albans as well.
I think you could get a lot of your buy-in from St. Albans on that.
I guarantee it. I think the people of St. Albans would love that.
Yeah, I lived there, so that would be, uh, great for me.
It'd be huge. It'd be a convenience of time. It would be great because, you know, I hear a lot of people saying, I want to live somewhere in Canal County, but not St. Albans because there's not a great way to get to St. Albans. And so this would take that off the table, and it would increase the property values of everyone in St. Albans. It wouldn't be that expensive in comparison to other government roads that we've built, and it could be paid for by a TIF district.
Yeah, explain that. Speaking of paying for this, how?
A TIF district. So let me tell you what that is. A TIF district is where when that economic development comes in, those townhouses, the additional shops, everything that comes in from the road, you get an increase of tax dollars coming in. Because again, new businesses, new taxes are paid. Those new tax dollars would go to pay the bonds of the new road.
Gotcha.
No increases in taxes for anybody. It wouldn't be something taken from the coffers and never have a plan to get it paid back. It would be from new tax dollars to pay for a new road.
So where in the, so you would be paid for with dollars that were developed from businesses that would build along that stretch of road?
That's correct.
So it's future tax dollars that would be paying.
That's how they pay off the bonds.
Not the current tax dollars, but future tax dollars from the growth from that area.
And you've seen TIF districts throughout the state. I mean, if you look at the new exit up in Morgantown that went to the Bass Pro Shop, that's a TIF district.
Pacific Center.
The Pacific Center has used a TIF district. It's been used a number of times. It's a great tool for cities and counties to be able to create economic expansion without raising taxes. I don't want to raise taxes. I want a flat budget where we look at where we are, where we don't change things. And then after a year or two years, get a handle of what our budget is, look at what we can do moving forward. Um, I really want to be a fiscal conservative in that office. I want to look at the budget and make sure that we're balancing our checkbook and living within our means, just like you do around your table at home.
Right.
You have to live within your means. The county, the state, the city, they need to live within their means too.
Right.
And, and that's really important to me.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, Nitro and St. Albans would be ecstatic, you know, to, to get.
So nobody's heard this idea then, yet, right?
No, this idea hasn't come out yet.
So we've broken yet another story.
Hey, absolutely, and I'm gonna be putting things out, um, on social media. You know, we have a long time until the election. So you're gonna see stuff from me trickle out as we go along. Um, and you're gonna hear different ideas that I have for this county. Um, and I, I promise you, I've got a lot of excitement about these ideas because they're affordable, they drive economic development, and they're things that should have been done a long time ago.
And will create small business opportunities.
That's it. You know, we always talk about trying to hit the home run and bring in Amazon or whoever. Love to have those people here.
Right.
But we forget about our small businesses.
And sometimes you have to build the small businesses to get the Amazons.
That's right. And also sometimes those small businesses become those.
The Amazons, right.
So, I mean, Amazon started in a garage. You know, this goes back to broadband. So today.
I think they're in my garage already, if I look at all the boxes.
So back in the day, businesses started in a garage, right?
Yes.
Today, businesses start on an app store. We have the least broadband, whenever I got in the senate, we had the least broadband connectivity of any state in the United States, as far as people being able to access the app store and create those businesses. We've increased that and we're now up in the lower forties, which still isn't great. But we're on a trend to allowing more small businesses to be created in West Virginia. I want to continue that broadband trend in Canal County.
Now, you said app, you said app what?
App development.
So you're just talking about small businesses?
Small businesses and technology.
Okay.
Yeah, that can be done anywhere. You know, we, we all know we don't have a ton of flat land laying around.
Right.
You know, and so you can't build a distribution center on the side of a mountain. So we need to think about different ways that we can create jobs while still trying to bring in that light manufacturing. Because we do have places for that. You know, at the Quincy Mall, there's a lot of areas for light manufacturing down there. There's a lot of areas for light manufacturing in our warehouse district in Charleston. And even in Nitro, there's great areas for light manufacturing. We need to be showing that. There's no central place in Canal County you can go and see available areas that we should be highlighting for economic development.
Yeah.
And we need to focus on economic development.
Yeah, I was over in North Charleston today. There's a lot of things that you could do, I feel like, over there. Like, they get ignored almost. And in Jefferson, right, exactly.
Flatland.
Yeah.
Along the river with rail, rail access?
Go on the other side of the river from Jefferson, you've got with the Institute exit, you have tons of flat land on the left when you're driving towards the Nitro St. Albans Bridge.
It hasn't been used yet.
Can we, can we put it somewhere that people can see that? We can highlight it?
And then maybe you, maybe then you lessen the crime, like, if, you know what I mean? Like, if you put something like that in North Charleston or, or in Jefferson, then maybe things start to, people start taking more pride in their community, right?
That's right. You know, the best way to help somebody is with a good paying job.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have a good paying job, it helps with money coming in, relief of depression. When you relieve that depression, people aren't looking for a crutch.
And it changes future generations.
Does, absolutely. And that's what we want to do here. I'm young, I've got kids, I'm here in Canal County, and I want to help set things up for future generations that come through Canal County. And I want to do the best I can to give back to the place that's given so much to me.
Yeah, I love that.
So that just about wraps us up.
I think that's, that was.
Did you have something else you wanted to?
Yeah, anything else you want to add? You did, I love that. I'm listening to you, you've got some great ideas.
You got our blood pumping now.
How would you like to end it?
No, I, you know what?
That was a very good ending, though.
I, I appreciate you. I, I, I just want to end it in the fact that, you know, Canal County needs to invest in its workforce, needs to invest in its people. We need to look at ways to create jobs for our citizens and to help our small businesses. The only time that I've ever had somebody from the government knock on my door is to collect taxes.
Yeah.
Not for anything else.
Right.
No small business outreach, not to see how they can help me, not to see how they can help with the graffiti that's been spray painted on the side of my building.
Right.
But to, hey, this tax is due. Hey, you're getting audited for this.
Right.
And you know what? That's, I understand, I want to pay taxes, I want to do everything that I'm supposed to do to contribute to my community, but there's other things that can be done.
Right.
And, and some of those things are is looking at the contracts that the city and the county gives out and making sure they're being bid. Because there are a lot of contracts given out by the city and county that haven't been bid in over a decade.
Yep, that's true.
And you know what? Those businesses have been doing great off of them, but none of those small businesses have had a chance.
That's right. That's, that's, that's true.
It's amazing.
I have, my, my husband is actually a small business owner as well. I don't know if you knew that, but he is in, uh, design, uh, Michael Switzer Design Works, but he is a graphic artist and a photographer.
Wait a minute, I need to send him a bill.
I know. But he has been in business in West Virginia, self-employed for probably going up twenty-seven years. We've been married almost thirty years. Um, and it's not been a, it's a, it's a grind. It really is.
Yeah, government's not always real helpful to small businesses.
Businesses, that's for sure. They sure do want their money.
I know a few small businesses that seem to get audited out of proportion.
More than, more than most.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've.
It's very curious.
Of my clients in, in business.
Depending on their political leanings?
I, I'm not sure. I, I would say so from, you know, but.
It's, I think it's an inference that you could make.
I mean, it just seems like, hey, this guy's getting audited again, you know?
Uh, let's look at his political affiliation. Hey, Chris, thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Very, very good discussion. Um, I look forward to having more with you, hearing more of your ideas and, uh.
One thing I want to end, uh, before we end.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, we have been talking about Chief Ty Cunt.
Yes.
And, uh, I, I did want to make sure that, I thought we had offered the opportunity for him to come on and tell his side of the story.
Yes, I actually sent, uh, Chief Hunt, uh, an email yesterday.
Okay.
I'm not, I, I don't think I've heard back, but absolutely.
Certainly welcome. And we have done that in the past. We've had two sides, we've had one side tell the story, and then we've, next week, had the other side tell the story.
Anybody is welcome to come on to this podcast and, and, and share their story. Um, we've extended that, uh, invitation to, to Mayor Goodwin. Um, many times we've asked Mike Pushkin many times. We've asked, um, Councilperson Emmett Pepper many times, um, Joe Solomon. I think I'm, I think I'm getting to Joe.
Right.
I think he, I think I'm getting to him.
We've had some.
I think he likes me. I think he's gonna come on.
Democrats on, not that we're all Republicans here.
And you know, that's kind of what I want. I want, you know, if you're in an echo chamber and you just listen to yourself and everybody agrees with you all the time, you know, that's no fun.
Right.
So anyway, uh, thanks for bringing that up and, uh, we will let you guys know if that happens. Um, but anyway, that's gonna wrap up the Scoop Squad Truth Pod, cause that was three good scoops. And good luck to you, Chris.
Thank you.
Chris Walters, running for county commission in twenty twenty-four. Uh, hopefully we can have you back.
Yes, I'd love that. Would you come back?
Absolutely.
Okay. Hey, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
I'll call you later. And Charleston, we will talk at you next week. Bye.
Re-broadcast, retransmission or transcription is not permissible without the expressed approval of Scoop Squad Truth Squad. Copyright two thousand twenty-three. The opinions on Scoop Squad Truth Squad are those of the hosts and the guests and not those of WVRC Media. Copyright two thousand twenty-three.